Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one Board of Selectment meeting. And as usual, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we will. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December ninth, two thousand twenty-one?
I think it's up to me. I so make a motion.
Okay, I will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, it's two zero with one absence. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of December ninth, two thousand twenty-one?
I so move.
I will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin is a yes.
Okay, then that passes two zero one. Thank you very much, Janet. Okay, going on to the updates. So mine aren't too long today. I want to say that in light of the surge that we've seen from with the cases of the Omicron variant, we decided to go virtual. We don't think it's going to be very long. This seems to be going very quickly, which is a silver lining. And I heard today, even in the country where this originated, they're now on the decline. So that's only a few weeks. So that's all good, but we want to make sure that even though our hospital is nowhere near being overwhelmed, that we want to make sure it stays that way. But we urge people to still, as long as they're vaccinated and boosted to get out and go shopping and go to the restaurants. They're starting to feel it now because people are canceling a lot of things. And this variant is not potent at all. We just know it's very transmissible. So be careful, be vigilant, and but if you're vaccinated and boosted, please get out there and enjoy all that Greenwich has to offer. And if you're not vaccinated or boosted, you really, you're exposing yourself and making yourself very vulnerable. So please reconsider that. But our numbers are very good. I will read them here. So far, to date, the town of Greenwich, we've had since the pandemic began, six thousand eight hundred and eighty-one cases. That's a change of five hundred and seven in a week. So we've had a lot of cases. Total active cases, one eighty-five. That's plus fifty-nine from last week. Deaths, thank God, stayed the same at ninety-nine. Total vaccination, so the younger age groups, groupings are just really, you know, they've been more recent as far as eligibility. But we have the age group, five to eleven age group, forty-four percent have had the initial shot. And the age group from twelve to seventeen has ninety-seven point seven four percent. So almost ninety-eight percent have had the initial shot. Eighteen to twenty-four, that is ninety-seven. And twenty-five to forty-four, this is the group that lags. They seventy-eight percent have had their initial shot. It's getting a little bit better, but we want to make sure that that really picks up. The forty-five to sixty-four group, ninety percent have had the initial shot, sixty-five and older is a hundred percent. So if you're fully vaccinated, five to eleven is twenty-two, twenty-eight percent. Seventeen to twelve to seventeen is eighty-nine percent. Eighteen to twenty-four is eighty-two percent. Twenty-five to forty-four is sixty-seven percent. Forty-five to sixty-four is eighty-two percent. And sixty-five and over, it's just under ninety-two percent. So that's, those are good numbers, and I think people are taking it seriously. I know a lot of, we've put a mask mandate in place just for our town buildings and strongly urged people to, if they're in a private building, a private business, and they can't keep a distance in a confined space to wear a mask, lots of places are already doing that. I was in the gym this morning. The crowds are down, but people are keeping spaced, which is good. So I think that all in all, most people are taking it very seriously, which is good. But again, we should be, we really should be, hopefully seeing the peak of this in the next few weeks and then look forward to better days, that's for sure. The, we had a flood update. We had, I think Janet was there the other night, and so was Lauren, at the Glenville School with Congressman Himes and the Army Corps of Engineers, talking about mainly the flooding issue coming from the Byram River. We did touch a little bit upon the issues with Pembroke Park. And we're, that's on the town side of it, and we're continuing to work on both of them. Was happy to hear that, you know, and know that this project now, this widening of the two bridges on the Post Road. We've never gotten this far before, which is great news. I still am a little bit concerned about some of the choke points on the river. Before we get to that, those bridges are still very narrow. And that's a hard one to solve because it's private property on both sides. So if we can widen them, we would, to me, I would be a lot more comfortable with this. So we're going to continue to look at this and meet with people and see what, whatever else we can do in addition to this thirty million dollar project on the Post Road. And maybe possibly some dredging, which would give us some temporary relief there. So we'll, we will continue to work on that and in every other part of town, too. But that was the focus of the forum the other night. We will be putting together a sidewalk and pedestrian-friendly committee. This is, it's been kind of started already in different spots, but I met with Maggie Bound in Old Greenwich. And Maggie's done a great job with the sidewalks for Shore Road endeavor. And so we're looking to get someone to cheer the, represent the eastern side, the central part of town, which includes Cosco, and of course, the western side of town. I spoke with Maggie and Laura Dickey, who lives in Cosco. They're very interested in being on it. Joe Cantorski from the Byram Neighborhood Association said he'd get us a representative from there. And something that we can look forward to, looking at every single part of town and seeing wherever we can put sidewalks, wherever we can put crosswalks, maybe repainting some crosswalks that may be fading. But just making it, we want people to get out there and not only exercise and get out of the house. We also know that things have changed. And I think a lot more people are still working from home and may continue to work from home in the future. So, you know, they're going to be in the house. So they're, we, you know, just for their mental health and for their physical health, they're going to want to get out of the, out of the house. And plus, it keeps cars off the road. So we want people out there walking, but just to do so safely. And the budget preparation for the next fiscal year is well underway. And we're doing both capital and operational. And we received the BOC's recommendations, which we appreciate the work they put into that. And, you know, we'll certainly consider those as well as the BET's guidelines as we craft our budgets. But stay tuned, stay tuned for that. And with that, Lauren is not here, so I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and hope to see you around town in the next few days or so. But I'll turn it over to Janet for her updates. Good morning, Janet.
Thank you, Fred. Good morning. My update, I'd like to begin by saying I'm pleased to be serving as the board liaison to the Harbor Management Commission, whom we'll be hearing from later in this meeting. And that's in addition to serving as the co-chair of the Sustainability Committee and liaison to the Energy Management Advisory Committee. Since our last meeting, the Board of Ed has met and approved its budget. I listened in to the meeting. I know the discussion was robust. It's now a matter of the Greenwich community to come together to support our schools, which I really hope we can do. The Board of Estimate and Taxation also met, and I'd like to note that, among other actions, it approved additional funding to complete an assessment of the impact of rising sea levels on Greenwich. Climate change is real, and this study is an important tool for the town. So thank you. Looking ahead, the League of Women Voters of Greenwich has Zoom programs that they'll host on Wednesday, January twelfth at seven PM. It's called Why Can't We Talk to One Another? It's all about promoting civil discourse, which I know we all value. So if anyone is interested in attending this program, you just have to go to the League's website, which is LWVG, sorry, LWVGreenwich.org, and register. And lastly, I have some thoughts regarding the Citizens Police Advisory Committee, but I'll wait till we come to that on the agenda item. And meanwhile, I also wish everyone a restful holiday break and a healthy new year.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, we'll go right to old business. And we have Valerie Masekini, Assistant Town Attorney, here to discuss the town's participation in national opioid settlement. Good morning, Valerie.
Good morning, First Selectman Camillo and Selectperson McWiggin and Town Attorney Schellenberg. The moment you said my name there, for some reason, I lost reception, but I believe you can hear me now and I'm connected again.
We can hear you. Good morning.
Great, good morning. This is a follow-up to the December ninth meeting concerning the town's participation in the nationwide settlement against three distributors of opioids and one manufacturer of opioids, a settlement that is with states across the nation and subdivisions of states. And there wasn't one issue that the board wanted to be satisfied that the town's participation in this settlement will not affect the rights of private individuals with respect to the claims they may have against these distributors and manufacturer. And we indicated that it would not, and we followed up to actually identify specific language that is contained in both agreements, which indicates that the rights of private individuals are not released. Their claims of private individuals are not released by virtue of these agreements. So the board can be satisfied that the town's participation in these settlements do not affect adversely the rights of individuals against these distributors and the manufacturer. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we have provided a resolution for the board and would be asking the First Selectmen to sign off on the two participation forums, which indicate the town's releases and participation, which we will then file on behalf of the town.
Thank you, Valerie. We appreciate that. Yeah, that was the one concern. So we're certainly relieved that private citizens' rights would not be abridged at all. So yeah, I mean, so I certainly will sign that, but I guess we need to vote on this right now, correct?
I have the actual resolution. I can read that, and then you can, you know, one of you can move it and then.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, resolve that the Board of Selectmen approves the participation of the town of Greenwich in the nationwide settlements to resolve all opioids litigation brought by states and local political subdivisions against three pharmaceutical distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, and manufacturer Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and its parent company Johnson &amp; Johnson in reference to the national prescription opiate litigation case number one, one seven dash MD dash two eight zero four.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
I so move.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin is a yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you, Barb, and thank you, Valerie. Appreciate it. Going on to new business, we have Parks Department's proposed two thousand twenty-two fee schedule. And we have with us Joseph Leano and Blaze Levitain. Good morning, Joe. Good morning, Blaze.
Good morning.
Morning, Blaze. How are you?
Good. How are you? Good to see everyone.
Good to see you, too. Morning, Joe.
Good morning. I cut off there a minute. I'm back on, so we got dropped out for a minute.
Thanks for joining us. I know this is just a first read, but it certainly gives us a chance to look at it. And I think you're going to post this on the website later for some public comment, too. But I want to thank you for putting this together. It looks fairly consistent with in the past, but I'll let you, Joe, and Blaze take it over.
I'll just make an opening comment, and then I'll turn it over to Blaze. But yes, you're right, Fred. I mean, this is our usual approval of the fee schedule for the two thousand and twenty-two season. And, you know, we, in consideration for this, we looked at the fees, you know, all of our fees. We've, you know, looked at the, there's a provisional beach policy in there, which we annually have approved. We looked at the, you know, the general proposal that was outlined in the the budget message from the BET, and it also includes some fees, increased fees for the golf, which we have not done in quite some time. But it's been about three years since we approved some of those, re-approved some of those fees for the golf course. So this, nothing out of the ordinary here. What will happen is that, as you said, we'd like to get this out into the public. We'll post it on our website, and we'll be back at your first meeting in January to ask you to take action. Blaze, you have anything? Would you like to comment?
No, I think I just, this will be, this is available with the Board of Selectmen agenda packet. And then we'll also be posting this after the meeting today on the Parks and Recreation website, so people can review the changes that we're proposing. We kept it, we tried to just balance everything between adhering to the BET budget guidelines, you know, market value of the services, but also trying to just balance, you know, the public nature of our programming and maintaining access for our residents to our quality public programming. And importantly, you know, knowing a lot of people have had financial hardship and instability over the last two years with pandemics, so really trying to limit the number of increases to make sure they're, they're very reasonable and nothing too, too out of the ordinary. So everything really straightforward, tried to limit the impact as much as possible. And if anyone has any questions, you know, that's why we do the first read, so that people can submit questions over, you know, over the next two weeks before the next meeting. Thanks.
So if you do, if you do receive some questions, as the Board of Selectmen, feel free to forward them to Blaze and I, and we'll try to assist people upfront. So, you know, it doesn't, you know, so we don't get to a meeting, a voting meeting in January, and there's a whole bunch of questions. So we'll try to take them on the front side and answer the questions for folks. Or if you have some yourself, feel free to contact us, or we can set up a little meeting before the next time that you meet and be more than happy to guide you through the, through the, through the schedule. So that's all we have, really.
Thank you. I know that, you know, the fees look like they're, you know, nothing went up too drastically, which is great. I know with people feeling the effects of inflation on everything right now, you may get a little pushback on some things, but thank you for putting it out there on the website. And we'll see what people say, and we'll certainly, and thank you for here into taking into consideration the BET guidelines. But, you know, I know historically, we've offered these programs, quality programs, at good rates. I know, for example, our golf course is one of the best public courses in Connecticut, and it's one of the best deals still in Connecticut. So we're very, very appreciative of all that work. And I don't know if Janet's got any questions or comments.
I don't. I echo Fred. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Have a good holiday, and we'll see you, I'll see you, Joe, and Blaze sooner. But Happy New Year, and thanks. We'll get this done in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up on new business, we have the Harbor Management Commission's proposed two thousand twenty-two budget. And we have Commission Member Bernie Armstrong with us. Good morning, Bernie. Bernie, unmuted.
Bernie, could you please?
One second, I, we're switching around here. Okay, good. Everybody hear me now?
Yes, I have, Bernie.
The Harbor Commission has revenue in its budget of fifty-eight thousand dollars, and that's predominantly from moorings. In fact, it's all from moorings. We have about eight hundred, eight hundred moorings in the town of Greenwich. Not everybody pays, but we average about fifty-eight thousand dollars a year in mooring revenue. This year, we're going to propose that we take another twenty thousand from the Harbor Management Commission Dedicated Fund, which has three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in it that's accumulated over the years and has been used. And we want to use that twenty thousand for a special purpose. And that is to help through the removal of the derelict lobster barges in the Mayanis River, which have been there for many, many years, tied up to actually the I-95 bridge supports, which is wholly illegal. The bridge barges are basically in derelict condition, actually considered to be a water hazard, and we're working with the state of Connecticut to make this happen. We anticipate if we do get some green light from the state, that it will cost the town about twenty thousand dollars to affect that. So that is on the revenue side. And on the expense side, we have temporary salaries of twenty-three thousand. That's for the woman that runs the office. The other items, we have a consultant that we use very heavily for fifteen thousand dollars. We have an outside consultant, engineering companies like Coast Race Coastal that we need from time to time to do some survey workforce. And then we need seven thousand dollars for outside contractors dealt with moorings. Our software fees are five thousand dollars. That's to pay the license fees for the mooring management software we have. The other items in the budget are rather small. I don't want to dwell on them. But we do have four speed buoys that we're going to deploy in the Greenwich Harbor area. We need to buy two more. They're about, two, possibly three thousand dollars. We haven't purchased them yet. We want to buy them, get them in the shed, so we can put them down this summer. And we also have a thousand dollars in the budget to pay for the disposal of the old Harbor Master boat. That's been, that's considered a hazard right now. It's something we're trying to get rid of. So basically, what that will involve is to pay for a hauler to take it to the dump and to cut it up and get rid of it. So in all honesty, the Harbor Commission budget this year will have revenues, including the twenty thousand dollar advance from the Harbor Management Dedicated Fund of eighty-five thousand dollars. And we will have expenses of eighty-five thousand dollars. So we'll operate this year and this coming fiscal year with a balanced budget. And that's pretty much all we have to talk about. We think we've kept it in good order, and the commission is running well, and I'm pleased to report that. So anybody have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Quickly, the derelict lobster barges in the Mayanis, were aware of all of who the owners are of those?
We are. I don't know that I have the names in front of me right now. I'm not responsible for that particular task. But we've been in touch with both of the owners of those boats, and they're not happy with what we're trying to do. But we're trying to at least get ourselves positioned. We've been in touch quite extensively with the state of Connecticut, and they're very sympathetic with us. And I think they feel they've got to be removed, but we need to get some kind of directive from them before we can act on our own to do that. But we have been, we've been in touch with the owners, there are two owners. We've been in touch with the owners since we started this initiative.
Thank you. Janet?
I don't have any questions. I had the pleasure of sitting in on the HMC's meeting, so I will just say thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Bernie, thank you very much. And yeah, I, I'm okay with approving this now. Sure, Lauren saw it, and she didn't have any objections to it. So if you're okay with that, Janet, well, you can put a motion out there, and I'll second it.
I am. All right, so I so move.
Okay, I will second that we approve the Harbor Management Commission's proposed two thousand twenty-two budget. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin is a yes.
Thank you all very much. I'll break off, and have a good holiday weekend.
Merry Christmas, Bernie.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going up, going to our last item for the regular meeting. We have, Janet's going to lead the discussion, and her thoughts on membership and training of the Citizens Police Advisory Board. So I'll turn it over to Janet.
So, thank you. I really appreciate the board's willingness to revisit the policy establishing this advisory committee. As you know, I was not on the board when the policy was passed. And while I think it's important that the committee members go through the Citizens Police Academy training, as we ourselves plan to do, I think it would be complimentary if members also completed training on unconscious bias. And I'm a little ahead of myself in that the town of Greenwich is developing such training for its own employees, but it hasn't launched yet. So what I'd like to propose is that when this training is available, committee members be asked to take it. And I'm bringing this up now because I believe that we're hoping to appoint the committee early in the coming year. And we need to be clear about what trainings will require of committee members before they're appointed. I'd also like to propose that the onboarding materials provided to committee members, once they are appointed, includes a one-page recommended orientation and training from the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, also known as NACOL. It's not specific training. It's simply an outline, a one-page outline of training topics that ideally should be covered with a list of potential resources. I'm also going to use this time to just clarify the data that we are anticipating that the committee is going to be reviewing is internal audits, citizens' complaints, those sorts of things. And then lastly, the policy doesn't speak to this, but I'd like to state my support that the committee reflects the demographics of the Greenwich community. In particular, we need to make sure there's representation from our community who may have a challenging relationship with law enforcement. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking that that might be the under thirties. So if there's anyone on this call or knows someone who's under thirty and interested in serving, you know, please, please self-nominate. I know, I know there's going to be no difficulty finding candidates who appreciate our police department. Greenwich is really fortunate to have the department we have. So with that, I will conclude my, my comments.
Thank you so much, Janet. Yeah, points well taken. This is something that, believe it or not, Lauren and I had talked, spoken about last winter, I think it was February. Something came up with a volunteer. It wasn't very bad, but we, we asked about if they were trained and could we train them, or at least board chairman, who could then maybe train the members of their committees. So, and we also reached out again to Mary Pepe at HR. It's very expensive. They can't, they couldn't do it. All of the, they, you know, they're doing our, our employees, and one of the things we spoke about last year was adding social media training. And so they're doing that now. But this is a little bit different. They don't have the wherewithal to do this right now. But we're thinking maybe there's some other organizations that do this training that you'd mentioned that maybe we can reach out to. I know the ADL has done some things with the police department, and it's been very well received. And that's a scratch on the surface of it. So I think maybe we could circle back, maybe offline even later today, just go over some things, just some ideas about some organizations that maybe we could reach out to. Because I think it's a really good idea. I think most of our volunteers are, almost all of them are terrific. And just all of them don't do anything that causes embarrassment to themselves or the town. But you never know, right? You always want to be careful. So I think that this is something we should really look into. So I think we're all on the same page there. And as far as the makeup of the membership, yeah, I think it's quite diverse. As far as age goes, it's, as you know, it's hard to get people under thirty for lots of things, just because they're working and doing other things. But certainly, I think if we keep an eye out for it, and I don't know everybody who's, we're interviewing some people today, but I don't know who else is going to come forward. But certainly, I think, you know, having this out there, and who knows, maybe somebody who doesn't come forward now, but may have an issue with the town or the police force or one of the organizations in the town. We'll look at this as an opportunity to have his or her voice heard. And I think it's, I think it will be, you know, expanded and broadened as far as a representative. And I think it's, I think it will be, you know, expanded and broadened as far as representation as we go along. But certainly, it's quite diverse, the applicants. But as far as age breakdown, I haven't really looked at that. But it's probably not that representative of under 30. So we definitely keep an eye out, watch that, see what we can do to enhance those applicants. So, yeah, I'll be around later, you know, maybe just a couple of names back and forth, you know, of organizations that may be willing to do that. Maybe even here in town, we have a couple that I'm thinking of. So thank you for your thoughts and we'll, we'll try and make this is just beginning. So we know, we'll get new and better ideas as we go along and strengthen this. And I look forward to taking the Police Academy with you this winter.
Likewise.
Thank you.
I noticed Lauren is, Lauren is on the call. I don't know if she has anything that she wants to add.
Oh, there she is.
Hey, sorry. Got here as quick as I could.
Thank you. Well, we know you had a busy, busy morning and we took care of it. There was not too much on the agenda today and you're in time for a special meeting. So thank you. Any, any comments or things you wanted to share? Or did you want to do an update now or?
I think I'll pass and just wish everyone who celebrates a Merry Christmas and looking forward to healthy and happy and prosperous new year.
Thank you. Same to you. All right. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, everybody. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and take care and we'll see you around town in 2022. Thanks, Barb, and thanks, Jenny.